You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Beginning June the 27th, if you have an outstanding misdemeanor or a felony warrant, we are giving the public a chance to clear their warrant by taking advantage of being processed at the satellite booking office in lieu of the county jail. This is also an opportunity to avoid your name being published on a criminal warrants list and being arrested at your home or place of business. For further information, call 546-2093 or visit epcounty.com and click on "Operations Safe Streets."
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, July 9th, 2018. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Item number three is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 3A through 3O. The county administrator would like to request item 3B be deleted. Are there any other items that members of the Court or the public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners, any items you'd like pulled from the Consent Agenda? Any members of the public? Okay, no. Hearing that, I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with deletion of item B.
Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout? Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Boat?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four is Public Comment.
We have one member of the public signed up to speak, and that's Mr. Pierre Andre Usada.
Good morning, Mr. Usada.
Yes, sir, Your Honor. Good morning to you. Cannabis and organics act, the great point to start off. It's a great platform to basically lead the way. $320 million is a lot of money. And right now, what we're trying to do, I don't care if it's federal, I don't care if it's state, I don't care if it's county, our job, your job, the ladies and gentlemen here in suits, your job is to make the government work more efficiently. And I can tell that there's a lot of attentive ears, and that's great because the idea is to look at it entrepreneurially, business-wise, industrially. The government has been around for years, so it's an industry, if you will. And right now, what we're doing is we're spending a lot of money, and we're not generating any. We should be generating revenue and then spending accordingly. Now, immigration, when people come in, it takes money. We're spending tax dollars to book them and what have you. When I get in trouble for smoking cannabis, a patrolman is getting paid, right? We're spending tax dollars to pay that man to book me and process me, but really do, there's a better way of going about it. There are a long list of controlled substances. And on this list, you have organics, you have synthetics. And why are we just going after organics? Because it's easy to come after us. It's easy to spend X amount of dollars to go after the organics. I'd like to see X amount of dollars going towards synthetics. If I was a law enforcement officer, right, and I wanted to spend agency dollars correctly, let's go after gyms, gymnasiums, because they're using testosterone, they're using all sorts of juices, synthetics. We don't see any of them behind bars. If we separate the two, legalize cannabis over the counter, it's safe, whereas the synthetics are harmful, I don't care if it makes me look pretty, right? It makes me look pretty, but I'm ingesting and putting synthetics, artificial into my body. And that's harmful, whereas cannabis and even mushrooms, those are better ways, you're categorizing cannabis with fruits, lettuce, right? All the veggies, tomatoes, carrots. Those are the items we need to be focusing on, not spending our tax dollars on arresting and raiding these organics, the growers of these organics. Because if we simply put this in a different agency and just, FDA should be the food, I'm sorry, it should just be the drug agency, because right now it's the food and drug agency, but if we remove the food, right, and place cannabis as a food, think of that as a food, because I can literally ingest it as a soup or what have you, then we're, okay, looking at, well, now we can generate that revenue as a government within our agencies because now we're bringing in and sharing tax dollars that are generated from sales. And now we're looking at synthetics, okay, what is it doing to our health? Prescription pills. I could pop juice if I wanted to. In the healthcare field, there are a lot of false prescriptions being written out. Why aren't law enforcement going after that? So there's a lot of adjustment that has to be made, and I'm here Monday mornings to share that info with my county officials, with my state officials, with my federal officials, because there are a lot of agencies in all sorts of realms, family systems, the Attorney General, there's a lot of stuff going on in there that I see that we need to address.
Time.
And by looking at the act, that will connect everything else. And six months from now, ladies and gentlemen, you know, closing Ted Cruz, Beto O'Rourke, Lupe Valdez, and our Governor Abbott, I want to hear these gentlemen and these women, respectively, because we have to. We have six months. I'm not, I don't want to spend, I don't want to have to come back two years after six months. So that's why I need to call these names in closing. We need to get cracking. Until next week, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this platform, Republicans, Democrats. God bless us all. Riley, I love you. We'll see you soon. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Usada.
Yes, sir.
Have a good afternoon. That is it for Public Comment, Mr. Navarro.
Item number five, Presentation. 5A, receive a presentation and accept a quarterly report from the El Paso County Housing Authority. Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge Boat and Commissioners. Thank you for the time that you've given the El Paso County Housing Authority to provide its quarterly report. We have reached the end of our fiscal year, and as you know, we have been working very diligently to improve the manner in which we provide housing assistance to our clients. A big focus this year has been to launch the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, because we are well aware that our clients require more than just federal housing assistance. To help our clients pave the way to homeownership, we have partnered with other organizations that will provide supportive services and address mental health, unemployment, legal assistance, family counseling, education, and childcare. As we proceed with our presentation, you will hear testimony from the wonderful community leaders that are here with me today, so that you can hear firsthand from them how our partnership has and will have a long-lasting impact on the clients that depend on the El Paso County Housing Authority. We will first start with Nick Muniz. He'll provide you an update on a recent fundraising project and grants that we are pursuing.
Morning. Mr. Navarro. Good morning. Good morning, Judge Boat, Commissioners. My name is Nick Muniz. I'm the Grant Writer and Family Self-Sufficiency Coordinator for the El Paso County Housing Authority. One of our first major projects was the playground at the Mickey Solis Complex. EFSA believes that play matters for all children. Research affirms that play is indicative to early childhood cognitive brain development. It is our hope that this playground that we built will help promote family self-sufficiency and community. This is the first phase of the project. The second phase will include an installation of the canopy. To address the needs of the community, EFSA recently submitted a Mainstream Voucher, Section 811 grant. This grant helps aid non-elderly individuals disabled between the ages of 18 and 62. The grant required that we leverage resources with community partners and connect individuals to services that may be in need. The following slide is a list of all of the partners that have committed to support EFSA in the Mainstream Section 811 grant. Emergence Health. Emergence Health Network will provide outreach and referrals for individuals with disabilities and developmental delays. The El Paso Collaborative. The El Paso Collaborative will help assist participants with home modifications through the Amy Young Program. The City of Socorro. The City of Socorro will partner with EFSA to provide ADA-accessible transportation. Project Amistad. Project Amistad will track and provide referrals. The Opportunity Center. The Opportunity Center will administer screening for those non-elderly individuals. Volar Center for Independent Living. Volar Center for Independent Living will provide outreach and referrals to those individuals at risk of becoming institutionalized or otherwise segregated settings. And lastly, Centro San Vicente. Centro San Vicente will provide an array of medical services to include diagnosis and treatment. Currently, we are working on the Family Unification Program. This program provides vouchers to individuals who are aging out of the foster care and are between the ages of 16 and 24 years of age. Lastly, we are working on the Resident Opportunity Self-Sufficiency Grant. This grant provides funds to hire a full-time service coordinator for three years. This grant helps promote self-sufficiency within our community. EFSA continues to submit and apply for grants that will positively impact the families we serve. This concludes the grant portion of our presentation. Thank you for your time.
In this part of our report, I'll expand more on the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. Through various surveys and community meetings, we have had, we've created a schedule of various events to bring supportive services to our clients, particularly the clients residing in Fabin's and surrounding communities. The Housing Authority's newsletter has been an effective tool of communicating to post around the community and via social media. One example, as you will see in this slide, our residents have expressed transportation barriers. Some have vehicles but no driver's license. With the support from the El Paso Sheriff's Office, a trained deputy has been giving classes at our location to help our residents prepare for the driver's license exam. Additionally, we advertised the opening of our Section 8 waitlist on April 26 and helped 136 families successfully complete and submit their application. As a result, in May, we started scheduling families to come in for interviews, and within a four-week period, we held orientation classes and issued vouchers. Since then, we have housed... Since then, we have housed six families, and we're expected to house at least five more this month. In May, we held our official Family Self-Sufficiency Launch Party. For me, it was a very humbling experience to have many supporters from the city of El Paso travel to Fabens and meet with my Board of Commissioners and residents. Many of the supporters set up booths and sign up families to reserve services and supplies meant for our annual back-to-school event that will occur Saturday, July 28. The chart will indicate that we will provide free dental cleaning for 40 children, free haircuts for 123 children, free backpacks with school supplies for 217 children, free food for, from the food pantry for 71 families, and free immunizations for 45 children. On this other slide, you will see a list of organizations that gave various donations to our playground project, reading club, and healthcare events. In this other slide, you will find a separate list of organizations that have made long-term commitments to our program by way of MOUs or affiliation agreements. I must express my sincere gratitude to Commissioner Bettis for being a keynote speaker during that event. I had several individuals who heard your speech and your personal story of family transition out of housing, and that allowed you to be where you are today, an advocate for the community. It really resonated with our clients, and I thank you for that. Also, Joyce Wilson and her team from the Texas Workforce Solution Borderplex signed an MOU with our Housing Authority, allowing us to have a virtual kiosk at our location and various other trainings onsite. In this slide, you will see the men and women that provide onsite training and events on a regular basis since November of 2017. This kiosks permits employment services, particularly to the communities marked in the green radius. As a result, it has eliminated about a 30- to 45-minute commute to the workforce offices that are on Saragossa North Loop or the new one in Horizon. I will pass it over to the Workforce Solution Borderplex representatives, who can share more about our partnership.
Morning.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Yvonne Lopez, and I'm with the Workforce Solutions Borderplex. And I want to say that what we do basically is, we help job seekers to find work or to find better work if they're underemployed, and to find employers, qualified people, to fill the positions that they have open. One of the things that we do primarily is, we do this primarily with the partnerships that we have in the community, like the El Paso County Housing Authority. And what we have done with them is, we have a kiosk where we virtually meet with some of the people that they have in their communities. And we help them to either schedule resume-building kind of classes, interviewing classes, we help them to actually build the resumes, and we help them in our database to develop a profile so that we can match them with the many jobs that we have in El Paso that are available. We also have funds that we use to provide training if they should need that, to get certifications and equip them to be better prepared for work. And we are also there to help them identify any barriers that they may have or that present barriers so that we can help to overcome them. We're very excited about this partnership, and we are excited also about how it might
Additionally, we would like to make you aware of the plans that we have to expand affordable housing units. Aside from applying for tenant-based vouchers, as Nick mentioned, we also want to participate under the Rental Assistance Demonstration, known as RAD. It is the program you see that is occurring in the city of El Paso by the city's Housing Authority. For those not familiar with the RAD program, it is a program where HUD converts the public housing assistance to Section 8 project-based assistance. Ownership is given to the Housing Authority, which allows the opportunity to finance and leverage funds needed for capital projects. There is a process for our Housing Authority to go through this conversion. The first step is to submit our request to HUD and then be placed on the RAD waiting list, which we have done already, and we received confirmation. We have been told that the waiting period may take between 18 to 24 months. The EFSHA has also acquired the seed money needed to cover expenses related to establishment of a nonprofit corporation. This subsidiary to the County Housing Authority will help financing of future projects and is part of our long-term strategy to achieve self-sustainability. We will continue to keep the Commissioners Court informed as we progress in these two initiatives.
Miguel, really quickly on the RAD piece, after you receive the confirmation from HUD, what happens after that?
So we have to take a look, we have to submit an additional application once they call us in. We really do sort of a financial plan. We'll do a pro forma. We have to inform HUD RAD team on how we're going to finance. We do have capital funds. When we are awarded capital funds, monies, the Commissioners allows us to allocate monies, but we can also reserve those monies aside to help us with financing of those two projects. And so it's really submitting a financial plan. HUD wants to know how we're going to finance and take ownership. And then from there, we will work with another RAD team that's already based out of El Paso. So in this next slide, we wish to inform you of our efforts to acquire housing for homeless veterans in El Paso County. We were aware by the El Paso Coalition for the homeless who reported in the fall of 2016 that there were approximately 85 homeless veterans in our area. The Veterans Advisory Committee were huge advocates of the veterans facing homelessness and the communities outside the city of El Paso. We have secured funding to issue Section 8 vouchers, but with case management. As a result, we now have a social worker who can work out of our office in Fabens and provide various case management services. We have representatives from both the El Paso VA Health Service Center and the chairman from the Veterans Advisory Committee today to tell you more about our partnership.
Morning.
My name is Charm Meiser. I'm the supervisor for the homeless program. And we were very excited. They changed the way they distributed vouchers this year. Usually HUD tells us, this year they let the VAs have a say in it. We were able to write a letter of support to the county, and we're awarded 10 vouchers. We've already written another letter and hoping for another 10 for FY19. What this does is allow us to expand the area where we house our veterans. We've been able to give the Housing Authority actually their own caseworker who will oversee the vouchers, whether it be 10, 20, hopefully more in the coming years. And we provide case management to help veterans become self-sufficient. We say their discharge plan starts the day we take them into our service, but it is to make sure that they have the resources that they need. If they start doing real well, we start backing off a little bit, letting them again do things on their own. If for some circumstances change, then we come back in and wrap services around. But we're very excited for this partnership. They've graciously given us an office so the caseworker can actually meet with veterans at the Housing Authority if need be. But she will be going into their homes, building relationships with landlords to continue growing and expanding the program. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Evernote, Birmingham Column, Chair of Veteran Advisory Board. As a Veteran Advisory Board, one of our core missions is identify gaps in veteran services. When Mr. Hernandez came to talk to us, gave us a brief from our monthly meeting, one of the things we identified and discussed was that we had HUD vouchers, but none for the county. And this is important for us, was for so that veterans who live outside the county, outside the city, could be in a place where they have support. Because one thing about when you're going through things, veterans need support in supporting areas. So at the point before then, before we met with Mr. Hernandez, the only thing that veterans had support was if they needed issue with housing, they had to go and move to the city. So this importance with Mr. Hernandez was great excitement for the Veteran Advisory Board. It's one of the things I always highlight when people ask the things that we're doing for the Veteran Advisory Board, was the partnership with Mr. Hernandez and Housing Authority and all the red tape they had to go through. I remember the second meeting, we meet with him after he started the process, he sent like a thick papers he gave me of all the things he did with the red tape he had to go through just to get the support needed for our veterans. And I want to always thank him and Housing Authority for other things they've done for assist veterans to have a stable environment to live in. Thanks, that's all I got.
And in this slide, Judge and Commissioners, it's just showing the referral strategy that we have with Charm and the rest of the El Paso VA Health Service Center team. What you see in the blue radius is really the housing jurisdiction for the city of El Paso. We're really focusing on targeting veterans that are around the rest of the county of El Paso. So we're already halfway leasing up the vouchers that we have now, and we're going to be interviewing again on the 19th to lease up the remaining vouchers. In this next slide, we wish to report our partnership with United Way of El Paso and how their support has allowed us to obtain two AmeriCorps Vista members who will help us build capacity for certain components of the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. We started interviewing candidates for these two positions last week. One member will focus primarily to create access to healthcare services, and the other will focus on education and employment. Deborah Zuluaga, President and CEO from United Way, is here to expand more on our partnership in the Vista program.
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. First of all, I just want to say how much we appreciate and really want to thank you for your support of the County Housing Authority and really want to extend our thanks and appreciation to Miguel Hernandez and his Board of Directors for his vision and the work he's doing on bringing together these incredible collaboratives. I think what you're seeing here is that when communities come together and find ways to bring resources together, the success that can be had, and I think that's a real indication of what you see here. We are very, very proud to be partnering with the El Paso County Housing Authority on a Vista, two Vista members, as Miguel mentioned. We have a program, we are in the second year of a three-year program for Vista's. Vista's are, as you may know, as I'm sure you know, domestic Peace Corps volunteers. They are individuals who are working in communities, and Vista members are tasked with helping build capacities of either organizations, agencies, or entities. And so, as Miguel mentioned, we will have two Vista's out working with him and his team, helping recruit volunteers, helping do training. They'll be able to assist with helping identify ways to write grants, to help support the work that Nick is doing. And it is a great opportunity for us to just have a year, minimum of one year of support to really help build and fill in some of those gaps that is needed to really continue to build the success of the programs out in Fabens. We also are going to be working together with other Vista programs around the community, including with EPASD and with the city of El Paso, to make sure that all the Vista's are working together collaboratively for the whole community. But we are extremely proud to be partnering with the El Paso County Housing Authority and with Miguel Hernandez and his team to be part of the solutions that he's bringing out to a very, very important part of a community.
And we now arrive to the final item of the report, and that is the referral program that we have with the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence. The El Paso County Housing Authority wanted to make sure that we do our part to help those who fall under the protection of the Violence Against Women Act. Assuring that survivors who flee from their abusers do not become homeless is of importance to our Housing Authority. After one year, we compiled data and presented the Center Against Sexual Family Violence staff and board, and we would like to provide you a small summary. This slide summarizes the process we follow. Clients who go to the Center Against Sexual Family Violence who have gone, will go through an intake process, and then their staff identifies the resources needed to help them, such as crisis intervention, hospital accompaniment, immigration services, and/or crisis intervention. A referral is then sent to our office, and a housing specialist from the County Housing Authority drives out to the Center Against Family Violence. Our objective has always been to immediately house the families in a unit that is safe and affordable. The advantage the clients have under this program is our housing jurisdiction. These survivors have the ability to move to a location that is closer to family, work, or medical facilities. Since the family's issued a voucher, a Section 8, that is honored anywhere in the county, as far west as Canotillo to as far east as Horizon or San Luis Obispo. Because of the Family Self-Sufficiency Program at EFSHA, adult survivors referred to us from the Center Against Family Violence are, as of today, either employed, going full-time to school, or enrolled in the military, as you see on the pie chart to the right. The pie chart to the left indicates that 43% of the referrals are adults. This is truly something wonderful to report, because housing reports from other programs still show a number of adults that are unemployed. These results tell me that the partnership and the program with EFSHA and the Center Against Family Violence has established is helping families put their lives together. In our last slide, it gives a summary of the first five families that we received. Without going into too much detail, you will see that on average, it takes the clients approximately 34 days to find a unit, and an average of 12 days for the housing inspection to pass, and an average of eight days or less to execute the housing assistance payments contract with the landlord. With us today is Stephanie Carr, Executive Director of the Center Against Sexual Family Violence, who will tell you more about the partnership and the program.
Good morning.
Thank you, Miguel. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. I want to redirect your attention back to this slide, because it really does sum up this partnership that we've had for a year. Historically, the County Housing Authority had some challenges. I think you now see under this new leadership with Miguel Hernandez that very dynamic and positive collaborations with a variety of community entities are working. We, I know from experience, when we've tried to place families in housing with vouchers, especially through the city Housing Authority, that it's never taken 34 days. 34 months would be much more common. And it is incredible to have families who've been in our shelter and our Transitional Living Center to go through this process so quickly with such security and safety to be in a living situation within a month. It's phenomenal. I want to congratulate Miguel's staff, who works with our staff to make sure that these families find appropriate housing that's affordable. I also think it really speaks to the partnership with the Borderplex workforce, that all of the families that we have placed, as Miguel said, are either employed, going to school, or in the military. That 100% number is also amazing. And so I think what you have here now, after many years, is a housing authority that is small enough to be mobile and can get these partnerships done in quick order, that's small enough to be able to mobilize landlords into supplying units that are needed, but that is large enough to have an infrastructure and a staff that are able to carry out these tasks in a meaningful and compassionate way. And so I just, I just really congratulate you and the Housing Authority on this phenomenal year and two of growth, and we certainly look forward to continued growth in this arena. We have plans for more than six or eight vouchers down the line. And so it's really significant work that's taking place. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation, Commissioners and Judge. Any questions?
Judge, Miguel, I've got to say that after a tour that I took some years back and after you came on.
Yes, sir.
The difference is very visible, and I congratulate you and your staff for doing such a great job in helping all of those folks that we have out there that didn't know that you existed. So great job, and thank you all for making time for being here with us this morning.
Thank you. Thank you for that comprehensive presentation. It is helpful.
Thank you.
I appreciate the partnerships that have been formed and your willingness to form that cooperative partnership with our Housing Authority. So thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
I just want to say one more thing. Part of the partnerships, you know, I think that's what I'm thinking about. Already looking at ways to bring...
Dip, you want to come up to the mic? Otherwise, when you say good things, if you're saying bad things, then stay away.
So I apologize. I just really want to also say this. This is just the start of the partnerships that are being created. I know for the United Way and for the El Paso County Housing Authority, we're already looking forward and down the ways of bringing out additional resources and partnerships in addition to the programs that you see, the Center Against Family Violence and the Housing's Fighting Hunger, which we do fund, but looking at parents as teachers, looking at bringing out even young professional volunteers through our RISE and through our Young Leaders Program to go out and do volunteer work and to mentor and work with the children out there. So I really feel like this is just the start, and you're going to really see this grow. And we just really want to thank you for your support of this County Housing Authority and the work that's being done out there, because it's, the future looks very bright. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, and I wish you well.
Thank you for your time, and I wish you a very happy day. Thank you.
Ms. Sanchez, we'd have to move to accept the report.
Yes, sir.
And make a motion to accept the Housing Authority's report.
Second. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout. Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, have a good afternoon.
Judge, would it be okay with you if I read items six and seven together since they're complimentary?
Yes, sir.
Please. Item number six, Human Resources, approve and authorize the creation of the County of El Paso's professional development policy. And item number seven, approve and authorize the creation of the County of El Paso's travel policy and procedures.
Good morning.
Good morning Judge, good morning Commissioners. Melissa Carillo with Human Resources. This morning, I have the pleasure of proposing two significant policies for the Court's consideration. As a reminder, these policies that are presented to you have been vetted, whether they be created or revised with other department heads and elected officials, and that's done to ensure that consistent application of these policies carries throughout the organization. So currently, the county has what's called our Travel and Training Policy. It's been in effect since 2010. It was last revised in 2016. And this one policy has really guided the county and its departments on what to do in the event of travel and professional development or certification. However, throughout the years, we've realized these two policies really need to be, this one policy really needs to be split into two to really cover what is travel, when is it appropriate, and what is professional development. So, taking item six, the first policy we are proposing is the new creation of a standalone professional development policy. While it does carry similar characteristics and definitions of what was already in your travel training policy, there are a few items of significance I'd like to point out for the members of the public and employees listening. This new professional development policy requires all county employees to now engage in a minimum of 20 hours of training credit per fiscal year. While many departments have already been practicing that, this 20 hours really raises the bar, and it coincides with the professional evaluation policy that you all launched in October. This is helpful for employees to be measured against goals and objectives. It ensures that they're trained and developed to carry through those goals and objectives each year. So, that is of significance.
Real quick question. Have we set aside a significant, an amount that would allow for that amount of training to occur for all employees that fall under this policy? Just making sure that we've been able to adequately fund that.
Yes, sir, because I believe Melissa will explain, there are multiple ways they can meet those 20 hours as well. HR offers a lot of classes. Different professional organizations have free online seminars. There's a multitude of ways to meet the 20 hours. And also, on-the-job training can meet some of those 20 hours, but I'll let Ms. Carillo finish.
Betsy, so yes, this policy does clarify and expands the methods of training by which employees can receive these hours. It includes seminars, it includes webinars, workshops, even some college courses, professional membership affiliations. But this 20-hour requirement, keep in mind that what we put in place any time positions are either created or sought during budget process, we are ensuring that 1% of that position's salary is set aside in a training account so that if, in the event, employees need to request to go out of town or even in town for training that has a cost, it goes through the vetting process with the Auditor's Office, and budget has those funding set aside based on that 1% of position allocation. So, I'd like to think that absolutely we're prepared for it. And as Betsy mentioned, within HR, this has been one of our biggest themes in our department, is really honing in and creating trainings throughout the year. It's been amazing to see since our move, our trainings that we offer are consistently sold out consistently. There's never room, there's always a wait, and we have to be bringing back those trainings. So, I'm excited to see that departments are really engaging in the development of their employees. Yes, sir.
Melissa, just a quick, where do you have the trainings as per routine?
Where do we normally have them? So, quite a bit of them are housed within HR now that we have our own training and conference room, but when we have trainings that exceed capacity, we'll bring them here into Commissioners' Court, and we're very grateful to partner with Chief Roger Martinez at Juvenile Justice Center. He tends to let us use those two rooms that hold a much larger capacity quite often.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So, other significant changes to this professional development policy beside the 20-hour requirement, it does require that training for each fiscal year be completed timely by August 31st. This allows for departments to evaluate their employees during that final month of September so that if the Commissioners' Court grants step increases, it's contingent upon successful evaluations. And rather than rush, the employees know their expectation cuts off at August 31st and allows for the evaluation period in September. Another point of significance is that this new policy requires county employees to have been employed for at least six months in a full-time capacity before seeking county funds to travel, whether it be here in El Paso or outside of El Paso. But before seeking those county travel funds, they have to be employed at least six months. Your current policy says one year. Your current policy says one year, this is same six months. And of course, the discretion still lands with the department head, whether they choose to invest at six months or wait a year or two at their discretion. And the final point of clarification that I'd like to point out is, this policy really clarifies the training agreement. Our employees who travel in excess of $1,000, who utilize county funds in excess of $1,000, must sign what we call an employee certification-training agreement. That ensures that they carry, they stay with the county for a period of time depending on the threshold of amount they spend, whether it's 1,000, 2,500, and then it caps off at $5,000. If the employees depart or separate employment voluntarily from the County of El Paso, the amount is prorated and it is paid back to the county. So, those are the biggest points of significance I'd like to mention for the Court. Are there any other questions? Okay, so I'll carry on to item seven. So, this is the second portion of that policy. Now, we focus primarily on travel. This policy is now what's called the Travel Policies and Procedures, and it has quite a bit of changes within it, but of significance, I'll mention a few. It really clarifies that employees truly make prudent decisions when they are incurring travel costs. Oftentimes, our Auditor's Office may receive some costs that are questionable, and the auditors will push back just to double-check that these really are the most prudent costs. So, we're reminding the employees of that at the very onset of the policy. Rather than just focusing on auto rental and shuttle quotes, the policy has been expanded to allow for taxi estimates and, of course, share rides. Share rides were not included in our current policy, and we wanted to ensure that was added as that is one of the mostly-used ways of travel now. We included a link to the county's recently adopted use of county funds by state, county, and precinct officials when they have not sought or secured reelection. That policy was recently approved by the Court, and it has some linkages to this policy, so we wanted to ensure that we footnoted that as well. This policy also allows copies of receipts to be submitted, but it reminds employees that when they travel, if they owe money back to the county, they must pay the Auditor's Office or the county through the Auditor's Office within 10 business days. Auditors has also put in some mechanisms to safeguard and catch that and reach out to employees if they have not timely reconciled their travel. This policy also changes the posting requirement for FLISA-exempt employees when posting on our website. As you know, any employee who travels in an exempt capacity, we post their travel on the county's website for transparency purposes. Right now, the policy is requiring that it be posted within 30 days. We've worked with the Auditor's Office, and we've expanded that to 45 days to ensure sufficient documentation is in before that posting is made public. So, that's a change. A few more changes to mention. Currently, the policy allows for no more than four employees at the same department. It's been expanded to include five or 50% of the department, whichever is lower. Now, four has been in place for some time, but it has caused some friction with some of our larger departments when it is needed that five employees go. And so, we've changed that requirement from four to five. This also requires lodging reservations be made utilizing the conference rates. There are times upon which employees secure hotel rates and they do not get the conference rate. As you know, conference rates tend to sell out quite quickly, but if, in the event, they don't secure that cheaper rate, written justification to the Auditor's Office may be needed. And again, this is just putting in checks and balances to ensure the most prudent of travel. This policy also requires that travel packets are submitted and approved before they're purchased on a county credit card. In the event the travel is denied, we don't want to ensure that, we don't want the county credit card to have already been charged because it's difficult to reimburse travel once a credit card has been secured. So, this policy now really reminds and requires, make the travel be approved prior to even purchasing it on a credit card. And finally, it allows for the chief administrator to authorize up to $2,000 per traveling employee for emergency travel only. We've had a few situations occur within the last two years, and sometimes the requests are not made timely enough before a Commissioners' Court meeting on a Monday. In the event emergency travel is needed, this policy will authorize the chief administrator to authorize up to $2,000. Anything in excess of that must come before Commissioners' Court. As you can see, many of the changes are really done to put the onus back on the employee to plan their travel timely, to minimize any expenses or additional costs that the county may incur. Any other questions?
Melissa.
Sir.
I'm just curious why it takes, once an employee comes back from a trip, and now it takes 45 days to post that on the travel?
Ed, I don't know if you want to answer this. It's regarding the posting changing it from 30 days to 45 days on the website?
No, my office, we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to review everything, but I think the change that we're suggesting is, it'll help everybody out in the process. One question I had is, on this $2,000 that's approved as an emergency, that's to allow the employee to incur the expenses and get reimbursed because we still can't advance the check. I just want to make sure the employee doesn't expect my office to cut a check.
There is an expectation, from what I'm reading and what the cases I'm thinking of where this happened, where the employees would either be allowed to use a county credit card. The flooding is where I think this came up, where there was a request that we send some employees to assist during the hurricane and from another law enforcement agency. They asked that we send some people, and they could not get, they had no, no ability to, our authorization to use a credit card.
On the credit card, it would work, yeah.
And I think we actually gave them some, I want to say a check.
Not a check. Because those have to come through, he pays claims in order for us to cut a check. And this, I mean, we can talk about that further, but I don't, I think that's a gray area that we need to make sure that the claim has been approved by the Court.
Okay, I just know that in this particular case, the employees needed food. We may have found a workaround in that case, but the idea was that there would be a way for them to be able to have some funds to travel on in an emergency.
I just don't know if that answers your question.
No, no, Ed, I apologize, but going back to the 45 days, is that because your office needs the additional days?
No, my office doesn't need additional dates. It's normally, it takes a little longer sometimes to get it from the individuals, so we're just extending it a little bit. It's not my office. It's just, we're trying to make sure we get the stuff timely, and it just takes a while sometimes to get the receipts from the individuals, if I'm understanding the question correctly.
So, now it gets me back to you, Melissa. I would think, I know that any time I travel, within that same week, I've got all my receipts. I would expect that of the rest of our employees.
Yes, sir, and so, I can't say, this whole process goes through a request through auditors, the Commissioners' Court approve the travel reimbursement checks, and this is all done when the preferred method is actually used, which is travel advances. There are times, very few from what I understand through the Auditor's Office, where employees will travel and then seek reimbursement thereafter. We caution against doing that because there's times where travel can be denied, and those expenses won't be reimbursed. But with regard to the travel advance, ideally, there should be sufficient time to be able to plan, prepare, get the correct forms into the Auditor's Office so that they know if this exempt person is traveling, so that those can be timely posted on the web.
Let me, I want to clarify on that because I never get an advance. I always submit my travel and get it approved before I book it, but then I submit my receipts when I return and get reimbursed the exact amount of what my travel cost. And I know that there are others who do it that way. I think the issue on, and regardless, whether you do it, whether you ask for the money upfront or get the money paid to you when you get back, you only have 10 business days to submit your receipts, and that's the rule.
And so, this posting that Commissioner Leon is talking about is...
Is the one for the exempt travel.
It's on the web. And I'll just clarify, Commissioner, the concern we have is, it takes us a while sometimes because if somebody uses a credit card, they get an advance, we have to now get the credit card receipts and reconcile them to the person's advance, and it takes a little bit longer to get the information, to compile it and get it on the website.
We wait for the credit card bill.
That's why we ask for the additional 15 days.
Okay, so we're back to, then those days are needed because of possible delays with the bank to send us those...
Yeah, getting the credit card statements and reconciling the travel advance.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And this policy, as we vet with all department heads, this particular one, we spent a lot of time with the Auditor's Office, is it particularly impacts their office? And so, it was a request that they made to ensure that the documents were sufficient before posting.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I've got just a comment or a question. Since I, since I travel a lot, I deal with this quite a bit, and my staff as well, when we're, when we're trying to fill out the forms and beforehand and afterhand, and it can get very confusing, and then I see, you know, there's, there's more, for example, the taxi estimate or ride-share estimate, you know, that's, that's something that is very hard to estimate, first of all, and it just creates more work for my staff to have to, you know, go and look up, you know, I don't know what time I'm going to be, you know, leaving, leaving one place and going to another possibly if I'm in a meeting or something like that. And, you know, it just depends on the traffic patterns that are, you know, I mean, sometimes there's going to be a rate, if you're, if you're using like ride-share, for example, like Uber or Lyft or something like that, you know, I mean, it can be, you know, either six bucks or it can be 26 bucks.
Correct.
And it just seems to me that, that, you know, trying to make them estimate how much it's going to cost, and I mean, I don't even know how I would go into Uber and, I mean, unless I would go on my app like right, like at the point in time, right today, I mean, unless, does that work? I don't know. But it just seems, it just seems like a lot of, a lot of extra work for my staff to have to go and, and, and look and see, you know, what, what the estimate may be. I mean, that's just one thing that I see.
You can always use a, like a cab rate, and then submit your Uber receipts, which are, I mean, I've never found them to be higher than the cab rate.
Right.
And then, you would owe the county the difference if you received an advance, or if, if, if you're waiting for reimbursement, you would just pay, or the county would just pay you for what the actual receipt was.
Right.
And Commissioner Stout, one of the things that you may also consider, this policy is not requiring that your staff go in, do an Uber estimate, print something out, submit it in advance. It's literally creating an estimate saying, I think I'm going to travel to the Conference Center four times. It may take, you literally estimate and say, I think I need $80 in ride-share estimates. And when you come back, you have that 10 days to reconcile where you say, I didn't use 80, I only used 67. I'll give you 13 back, where you know what, I actually used 87 because traffic, and then they have, the county would owe you $7.
Sure, I mean, I understand that, but it seems to me that, I mean, I'll have to, I'll have to check with my staff again, but it seems to me that they've been...
It's been a struggle.
It's been a struggle, yes. And, and then also, I mean, I don't think I've ever, I don't think that, at least in my office, that we've, we've ever submitted anything 45 days prior to the date of travel. I mean, we, I don't think we even like are able to plan that, that far ahead unless it's, unless it's like something with TAC or something like that, but I typically don't let them know that I'm going to a training or that I'm going to have to travel, you know, sometimes it's, it's within three weeks or a month out.
Mr. Deon, you may want to correct me if I'm wrong, but the 45-day really is the guideline, the standard, the threshold for all other county employees to include you all as well. But in the event there are emergencies, which there are plenty of them, we get called on days' notice, I know during lobbying time or testifying in legislature in Austin, you get a days' notice, a week's notice. So, we understand that happens, and so, this policy does not restrict the county to pay for travel if it's within 45 days.
That's fine, I just want to make sure that Auditor's staff understands that as well because I know that we've had, my staff has had, I mean, issues with, with, you know, trying to make sure that everything is, is taken care of, and, and so, I mean, just, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, that's, that's understood as well because I, I mean, I don't want, I don't want my, you know, my staff to have to go through, you know, have to argue with other people or have to deal with, you know, trying to justify why, why, why we're traveling or what we're doing.
Well, I know my staff will ask just for, we need a reasonable estimate, and we need an explanation. So, when the auditor, somebody come in and looks at the travel, that they can see what the travel was for, or it's going to be posted online and a Commissioner may ask for it, and we have to provide it, it's just, it's just documentation that needs to be in every file for the travel.
Sure, I mean, there's no problem with, with providing the documentation, but sometimes it's, it's difficult to do it.
You can't do it ahead of time, but a reasonable estimate, and as Melissa... And as Melissa said, after the fact, a reimbursement for the overage would usually be forthcoming as part of the reconciliation. Just one other comment on the $2,000 emergency approval. I checked with my staff, all those expenses relating to the flood, they were absorbed by the sheriff. So we never received anything that came through the pay claims for the county.
And that's what we did because we were unable to get the money. We were, the sheriff ended up using funds and covering other, he covered constable cost.
And so what I'm saying is that I don't think the auditor's office has authority to issue a check within that $2,000, but the credit card is an option for booking flights and hotels and all of that. Thank you.
Questions, commissioners? Hit the presentation.
Make a motion to approve both six and seven?
Second? Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number eight, purchasing. Approve and authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for guardianship services for the county of El Paso. In accordance with Local Government Code 262.030, the purchasing agent has reviewed the use of the request for proposal process.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners. Elvia Hauri, former bid supervisor. This item before you is a request to use the RFP process to obtain a contract for guardianship services. In accordance with statute, the purchasing agent has reviewed use of the process and determined it to be the best method to procure these services.
Who provides those services right now? It's Patrick Tamiastad, right? Okay. To approve.
Second? Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Item number nine, budget and finance. Approve amendment number 39 to the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $364,363.70, thus increasing the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 overall operating budget from $486,933,574.83
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Any questions in regards to this week's budget amendment? If there are none, I'd like to ask for your acceptance, please.
Move to approve. Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Another incredibly short meeting, commissioners. We still have executive, but...
This brings us to executive session, item number 10. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 10A through 10C pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.